Let's settle down and go ahead and get started. All the commissioners are here. Sidney, are we gonna do an especially executive meeting?
No, we're scheduling.
Okay, do you want to do that at your time? Or do you want to do it?
Yes. So I'll add those additions.
Okay, all right. Mr. Jones, would you give us the invocation? Everyone stand and please stay standing for the pledge.
My father, we're grateful for today, for all your blessings. Lord, we thank you for these who are gathered to be a part of your business of Walton County today. We pray your blessings on commissioners. We pray for strength, wisdom, and guidance, Lord, as they'll say and do it for the things that are in the best interest of Walton County. And, Lord, we pray that those things will be a blessing to you. In this God and my name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize our public officials that are here. Mr. Boots McCormick, longtime friend of mine and city council member of Freeport. Boots, we appreciate you coming up here and appreciate the job you're doing as councilman in Freeport. Next, we'll call the meeting to order and consider any additions and deletions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under deletions, admin is requesting that we delete number thirty-six under citizen request. The request was by Kevin Boyle, and we'll be moving that to the next meeting in South Walton.
Okay, we have a motion.
Wait a minute, I think Sidney's got.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I've got two agenda items to add as well. One of them is a request to schedule an executive session for June tenth in case number two thousand eighteen C A five four seven. That's the customary use lawsuit. And then the other, I guess, item that we would need to discuss is canceling and eventually rescheduling the public workshop that was scheduled for June the tenth.
Motion to approve the additions and deletions as presented and make it part of it is go ahead and cancel that workshop we were gonna have on that date.
Okay.
And set the meeting for two-thirty.
Okay.
We want to go ahead and schedule the executive sessions?
Yeah, let's go ahead and get it out.
Okay, that's fine.
Just.
So we need to hold two executive sessions on June the tenth. One of them is customary use case two thousand eighteen C A five four seven. And then the other is in defranchise versus Walton County. There's four cases for that, and those are listed in the agenda. What I would suggest is if we can start at two-thirty, that would give us forty-five minutes for both of those executive sessions. And I can advertise, probably start with defranchise and then do customary use right before the meeting.
Okay, do you want me to clean this motion up to incorporate everything?
Sure.
Okay. The motion then, modify the motion to accept the additions and deletions as presented, cancel the workshop, or I think it was at three o'clock that day.
Yes, sir.
And to have executive sessions on customary use and the defranchise case starting at two-thirty.
Yes.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion with the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay. Now, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, you want to do this right?
Oh, yeah. Let's go ahead and approve that, and then we'll do that. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience?
Point of order.
Okay.
Chairman, kind of out of sync. I think we're supposed to have public comment before we go into the.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The consent.
Excuse me, do we have any public comment before we go on to the consent agenda? Now, this is strictly for an agenda item, and you will have a chance to speak to that agenda item when it comes up in the meeting. But if you have to leave early, you're welcome to come and speak. Please, if you do, you have three minutes. State your name, spell your last name, and what agenda item number you are speaking to. Seeing none? Now, we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I think you got a motion in a second.
Second, okay.
Motion.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Mr. Gladwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a group here from Paxton School. Paxton is generally known for its excellent athletics, but I have a son who reminds me or tells me all the time, that's the Harvard of Walton County. And since I went to Walton, that's his way of jabbing me. But anyways, they do have some, they have an excellent academic program, and that begins at the elementary school level. And today, we have a group here, the Lunar Cats from Paxton Elementary School, who competed in a national competition in Houston, Texas, and won a design and a, what was the other one?
Explorer.
Explorer, design and explorer competitions, and that's a national competition. So I'd like to make a motion that we pass a resolution that Ms. Hino drew up for me to recognize their excellence, to recognize their academic achievements, and to praise them for the hard work that they've done all year to win these prestigious awards. And I'd make that a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
If the chairman would.
Yes, I was gonna suggest, could you come up and have your pictures made with the commissioners? Also, parents, come up also.
Congratulations.
Their festival was a world, a world festival. They were, it was everyone, it was the whole world.
Congratulations.
Chance. Dan Campbell.
You want to say something?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Danny, do you want to do your other thing right now? Or you want to wait on it?
We'll do it later.
Okay. All right. Real quick, before we move forward, I would also like to thank the parents of these children. I know how hard it is when your children are competing in things and you have to travel, how expensive it is. And I compliment you on a job well done. Okay, Mr. Jones.
You need to do the waste management.
Oh, I'm sorry. Getting ahead of myself. We have, we need to approve the EALs. Do we have a motion for that? Excluding waste management?
Excluding waste management.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just to be clear, that was to pay the waste management.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was the waste management.
Well, then, I didn't vote, by the way. Acknowledge my conflict of interest of filed a proper form with the clerk.
That's what these long weekends do for you. We're all moving slow. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. Hope each of you had a good, relaxing weekend. First item is a request to accept the resignation of Laurie Hood from the Local Restore Act Committee as community leader, and request approval to advertise to fill the vacancy. You'll see the list there of the eleven criteria set forth that makes up the local restore committee. And so with your permission, we will advertise to fill the community leader position.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Next item is a request from admin regarding Victor Cora with the Census Bureau. Ms. Hino has worked closely with these folks, and we're down to needing a resolution. But I believe there may be a brief presentation according, regarding the twenty-twenty census, and then we will request the board to approve a resolution creating a census complete count committee. So, Mr. Cora.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good morning, commissioners, how are you?
Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the gallery. My name is Victor Cora, and I'm with the twenty-twenty census. And as you know, we're getting ready to count the population here in less than a year of over three hundred and twenty-eight million of us. And you know, the census has been mandated since seventeen ninety by Article One, Section Two of the Constitution, and it's about two things, power and money. The power aspect of it is our representation is based on the count. And floating that right now is the third most represented state in the Union, and we're on track to gain two more seats in this particular decennial census. Power, money, six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars are distributed every year based on the count. The money follows the numbers. It doesn't follow the needs. So right now, and I want to congratulate Walton County because I understand that over the last year, the population is estimated has grown a little over four percent. So we have to capture that four percent so that you can get your fair share of funding. This year, the census is going to be a little bit different. That's why we're out there educating, engaging, and motivating the population to participate in the census, because you're gonna have an opportunity to self-enumerate yourself online or by phone, or if you're old school like me, you'll just request a form and we'll send you a form. So right now, you're gonna get an invitation to participate and self-enumerate yourself around the twenty-twenty census decennial. So we're asking communities and counties such as yourselves to form what's called a complete count committee, because you know Walton County better than anyone else. So we come in here and we start saying, fill out the census form, you're not really gonna listen to us, but you will listen to those stakeholders and trusted voices in the community to be able to participate so that you can have those roads, schools, medication, all the programs that are paid for by the federal government based on the count. And I repeat, that the money follows the numbers. It does not follow the needs. So right now, your population is growing. We're also hiring. We're hiring and we're paying an average of twelve to nineteen dollars an hour plus fifty-eight cents a mile to help with the operations that are included with the census, starting with address canvassing, which is gonna start here shortly in August, and then rolling on into the actual enumeration, which will be counting the people experiencing homelessness. That's a special operation. We're gonna be counting folks at our correctional institutions, our military installations, hotels, hospitals, and we need local folks to help us with those counts. And then in March timeframe, we're gonna send out invitations for everyone in Walton County to self-enumerate themselves. And that's gonna happen probably between the mid-March until sometime the end of April. If by the end of April, you have not completed your census online or by phone or form, we're gonna start sending local folks to start knocking on your doors and go through the questionnaire. So if you don't want us to be knocking on your doors, because we're gonna count everyone either online or by phone or in person, then just complete the enumeration. And the complete count committee, that body of volunteers, the trusted stakeholders, are gonna be the one that are gonna help us get the word out to the community using the tools that we already have in the county. It could be sporting events, county fairs, rodeos, whatever it is that we use to gather the community and bring them together. We're gonna deliver the census message to them and encourage them that their participation in the census is important for the growth and shaping the future of Walton County. All hands on deck so that you can get your fair share of funding. In twenty-twenty-one, when the numbers come out, all the lines are drawn, depending on the growth of the population, then we may get another district seat, you may get another congressional seat. So it starts from the federal government and works its way down. So the census is extremely important. And like, for example, in twenty-ten, we undercounted about a million children under five. And the ripple effect of that is that right now, you don't have the fundings for brick and mortar schools. Our students are learning in makeshift classrooms and mobile units, and right now, you want them in traditional brick and mortar. So the counting and being, allowing yourself to be counted in the census is extremely important. And the numbers that we get, we have to live with for ten years, ladies and gentlemen. So we only get one chance to do it. So right now, whatever numbers come out in twenty-twenty, we live until the twenty-thirty decennial. The money follows the numbers. Any questions?
No, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Cora. And for the people here today, please participate in the census, get your families to participate. As Mr. Cora has said, this is vital for the future of Walton County. So make sure everybody you know is filling out a census form.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one last thing.
Sure.
Your information is kept private and confidential. We do not share any information. All we're getting is the characteristics of the county. As a census employee, I'm bound by law for the rest of my life or I'm subject to a fine, five years or two, a quarter million dollars. And the census does not share any information for seventy-two years and one day. And if you follow genealogy, you'll know that if you're trying to get information right now, you're only getting nineteen forty census data. In twenty-twenty-two, the nineteen fifty census data will be released. We protect your information by Title thirteen, U.S. Code Title thirteen. Thank you very much for your time. I look forward to working with you, Ms. Hino, and your complete count committee to get them ready and get them engaged.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Motion.
We need a motion for that.
To approve the resolution.
Resolution.
I moved.
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay.
Thank you, commissioners. Next item is regarding a request for direction on two properties available for purchase. Parcel numbers there, they're at one fifteen East Sloss Avenue and North Seventh Street and East Chapin Avenue. Stan has had this discussion, but I believe just there in front of you, and ask him to give you a little more detail of exactly what we're looking at. These are two parcels that are adjacent to property we own just west of Legal.
So, good morning, commissioners. The first lot that you see on your screen there is approximately a quarter acre lot. It fronts East Sloss, and it's actually the other half of the lot that we already own and utilize for parking. Can you scroll down to the next? That lot is adjacent to the parking lot to the north, and that's about a half acre vacant lot. So I've spoken with the owners of those two lots. They've expressed an interest in selling it to the county. I explained the process to them, so we're here today to get your direction.
Okay. Now, do we need, Sid, do we need a motion on this? Or can we just direct him?
If you guys, well, if you would like to move forward, we'd need a motion to obtain. We just need one appraisal.
One appraisal.
Is it overflow parking? Is that what we're looking at it for? Did we? I apologize if I don't remember.
We haven't really discussed the use. It's the proximity of it and where it lies and to the other property the county owns that makes it attractive. From a growth standpoint, we think the price is gonna be fairly reasonable. So we just think it adds our portfolio in the area as time comes for growth as needed. We'll be prepared to do that.
And talking with Mr. Carpenter, if he's here, he can come talk for himself, but I think this would fit him well with his mobility effort to move traffic, you know, park here and move traffic south. We need land for a hub and parking for that. So it does fit him and what he's trying to do with his grant money. If he's here, he can come explain that.
I don't see Mac.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have these parcels, there's several parcels that are within a block or two blocks of the courthouse complex. We all know at some point in time, the courthouse itself is gonna probably be expanded. And if we can get these at a reasonable price, any of these vacant properties within two blocks of this courthouse, we ought to consider it just for expansion in the future, whether you're on the board or not. So with that, I'll make a motion to move forward with our process to look at purchase, to look towards purchase of these properties.
Second. Second. Any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is in regards to the advertisement we did for an RFQ for design services for the third floor courthouse. We got those, we got that on the street, we got it back, and we decided that it was, the way it was comprised and written was quite confusing from those that were submitting and to our end as well. So what we would request is that we reject those proposals and extinguish that bid, and then to reissue for design-only, a request for proposals that would meet with the judges, meet with county staff to determine what we want the courtroom to look like once it is renovated, and not get too many things moving at the same time. That's what we found happened here. We had too many balls in the air and we couldn't catch them all. So this would allow us to sequentially move through the process, but through the request today would be to allow us to hire a design firm that would meet with the, again, the judges, county staff, other interested parties to say, this is what it used to look like and/or this is what we want it to look like in the future. Once we get that, we will move to a more design phase of knowing what it's gonna take to get it there, and then move to a cost of building it out. So that would be our request.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to cancel RFP.
Motion to cancel RFP zero one nine zero two five and to authorize staff to go out for an RFQ for design services of the third floor courtroom.
Second. Second. Any more discussion from the board?
We would ask that you add to your motion to reject the proposals that were submitted.
Okay, and I'll modify it to reject the proposals so submitted.
Modify the second. All right, any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the TDC, before Brian gets up here, I just want to announce that our TDC director, Mr. Tusa, is out with a bad back. And I'm not gonna say he deserves it, but anybody that does yard work when it's ninety degrees, not the brightest bulb in the room.
He's suffering from middle-aged man disease.
Yeah, and I've already had this discussion, so he, and he agrees with me.
Yeah, ten for it. Chairman, appreciate it. Commissioners, I'm Brian Kellenberger, Director of Beach Operations. One item of business and a few updates. First item is request to award ITB zero one nine dash zero one nine to low bidder Z two C Outdoors LLC and authorize chairman to sign the contract for that project. This is the right-of-way and median maintenance project from ninety-eight to north of the bridge.
Okay.
Low bidder was forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty. Z two C currently holds another maintenance contract for us on our scenic corridors.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion in the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, sir. Updates on the workshops we held a couple weeks ago. The first one was the Walton Dunes and Hedland Avenue Public Beach Accesses. Y'all were all there, so I won't go over the details, but we've sent the task orders to two different engineering firms in our engineering services pool, Dewberry for Walton Dunes and Atkins for Hedland Avenue. Both of them have sent me some requests for more additional information, and I'll respond to those today. Second one is our Dune Allen Regional Beach Access Parking Workshop we had on five fifteen. Good attendance, some of the same issues were brought up, mainly the opposition to the Bridge Road and the closing of Woodward. Jay will be back to y'all on the June tenth meeting to go over more details of that workshop as well as the contract for the property. The last one is our Greaton Beach.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The two parcels.
Yes, sir.
I think the present owner wants to abandon a portion of Woodward.
Yes, sir.
Is there a, let's see how best, but is there a catch in that agreement? If it's sold to the county, that we could not extend Woodward on our piece of property out to thirty-eight?
Yes, sir. So that Woodward is on a easement.
Yes, so the way they're, and the contract will be before you guys at the next meeting, so. so you can consider it, so I don't want to get too much into it. But it's my understanding that Mr., that the individual that owns the two lots, and it wouldn't be structured that we would enter into the contract and agree to the abandonment. It would simply be that we would set off the closing to give us time to go through the abandonment process, and then if we did not abandon the property, at that point, the individual could decide to walk away from the deal. That's how it's structured.
Okay, I understand that, and, but my question is, if we go through the abandonment, and we in fact get the property, I don't want anything to prohibit the county from doing what it needs to do or wants to do on a piece of property that's owned by the county. So if there's some caveat in there that would not allow us to shift Woodward over to the west and bring it south to 38 on our part or on those parcels, then I.
No, sir, no. So on our property, we can do as we please with it, as long as we follow the rules.
You know, everybody at this board's probably got a million emails in the last week or so, and one of those was just one that caught my eye, is if he is dictating what we can or can't do with Woodward, if it is abandoned on his side, that we couldn't extend Woodward through our property if we wanted to.
I don't believe that that's part of that, but again, we'll have the final contract for you on June 10.
That's the same, my same question is, if we did what we've tentatively agreed to do, and we found out that it was a total disaster, and then decided to move that road back down to where it's on our property, would anything in that contract prohibit us from doing that?
So again, we'll have the contract on June 10. I honestly, I'd. Yeah, but we don't want to get too much into it.
Let's end this discussion until June the 10th, because we don't really know what the contract's going to say anyway.
Right, but we'll make sure that we address all those issues and have answers for you on the 10th.
Okay. Grayton Beach?
Yes, sir. Grayton Beach, we had a public workshop on 516, dozen or so people there. Both sides were represented, some people opposed, some people for.
Is this for the bathrooms?
Yes, sir. What came out of it was a request to explore more options as far as location and routes to get to it. So there's a couple more areas you could put it, the central area or the west area. In order to do that, we would have to do a change order to the original task order. The engineer of record has completed their original work under that original task order. So I'll be back to you on the 10th with a cost for that, and a little bit more information as to what that will include.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Brian?
Yes, sir, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Sidney?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, item number 30 is a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the closing documents for the sale of the old bank building on Baldwin Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
And Commissioners, I guess I want to take this opportunity to thank Janara Roop and Rosalyn Campbell in my office, especially Janara. She's been working at the bank building nonstop since November, working to make sure that our records are retained according to retention schedule, going through records as old as like the 1970s and forward. She's worked tirelessly to make sure we had the space, got everything organized so we could move into our new records facility. So I want to thank her for her hard work. The next item we've already handled, item number 31.
Mr. Chapman, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Glidwell.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of meetings ago, we approved the, to proceed with the Paxton Park, which is on Clear Springs Road, and Public Works is starting the process, we're doing the engineering. And we talked about grants, but we didn't nail it down specifically. So it's my understanding that there's going to be some FERDAP grants available, and we need $200,000 for that park. So I'm requesting that the board formally, or formally ask for a FERDAP grant for the Paxton Park in the amount of 200,000, which is the maximum, and so that we can proceed with the pavilion, the bathrooms, the basketball courts, and all the other things that we're going to put there. So I make a motion that we apply for a FERDAP grant for the Paxton Park, which is on Clear Springs Road.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have discussion with that. Is that, is there only one FERDAP grant, or?
There's two.
Because of my, okay. Thank you. No more concerns.
Dee Dee, you know what she's talking about?
I'm all about D3.
Okay, so there's plenty of FERDAP grants, two?
Two.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Nipper, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Nick.
Yes, sir. I'd like to get an update on the Forest Shore Drive area and the Golf Garden. We're getting a lot of concerns, citizen concerns about the traffic that comes through Forest Shore Drive. I went down and looked at it, it's been a, it is, it is a, an issue that we have, you know, it looks like turn two off Talladega when you come through there for some people. And I know a lot of that has to do with the construction on Highway 98, you know, people trying to avoid that construction on Highway 98, and just like to know what could be done. Chance, would you like to help us out with that, sir?
Yes, sir. A little bit of, little bit of history first, I guess, on, on the Golf Garden property there and the Driftwood intersection with Highway 98. Several years ago, the county started a engineering effort to address several issues on Driftwood Road and Ellis Road, south of 98, between 98 and Scenic Golf Drive. The issues that we tried to address was stormwater issues, the main thing, also pedestrian access and in traffic circulation. And through several workshops that we had with Atkins, who's the engineer of record on that project, we discovered that with the improvements that were being made by DOT on Highway 98, it was going to be pretty important to have a signalized intersection at Driftwood Road. After some discussions with DOT, it became apparent that DOT would not support a signal there without a roadway connection from Highway 98 back to Walton Way, which is what Drift, what Forest Shore Road terminates into. Some early developers, I guess, on the Golf Garden property, I guess, had some early meetings with DOT to discuss driveway connections on 98, and they were adamantly opposed to a connection from 98 to Walton Way. Although they wanted a signal, DOT refused to allow the signal without that connection to 98 from Walton Way for, I guess, that developer walked. There is a developer there now who has entertained it, but more importantly, the existing property owner has entertained it. And we held up on our design concepts on Driftwood and Ellis until we could get this signal worked out with DOT. We had a special meeting with DOT Access Management Review Committee, and they approved the signal with the, with the stipulation that a road would be provided between 98 and Walton Way, which would basically be across the Golf Garden property. I know the board approved a resolution several meetings back that, that I guess committed the county to funding, partly funding a signal on 98 and roadway improvements within 98 to accommodate the connection north across the Walton Way, across the Walton Way through the Golf Garden property. Right now, the, the only holdup in that is the county actually acquiring the right-of-way or easement to facilitate that road to allow us to move forward with DOT and some type of a JPA to get that signal done. I do understand that there's a concern of the public out there that there will be an increase in traffic on Forest Shore. I'm not sure that I'm completely convinced of that. There, there could be some additional traffic, depending on different conditions at, at different intersections from that neighborhood back to 98. I do understand it's difficult to account for all that under the current construction that's happening on the six-laneing project, but from the county standpoint, from, from, I guess, my, my perspective as a traffic ops engineer, any connection that we can have to increase the network, transportation network there is a, is a benefit to the overall public. It provides some redundancy in the network and the system. If we were to have a, some type of a closure or unexpected failure on maybe Holiday Road or even on Forest Shore Road at the other end, I know that connection provides us some redundancy and an opportunity to, to overcome that in the short term of the repair. So I, what, did I address your question?
You got it. You, now, now, with the completion of Highway 98, when that job is finished there, how does it relieve the traffic through Forest Shore Drive? Or does it?
Well, it, it will, right now, people are seeking alternate routes because of the constriction on 98 through the construction, and we're adding, they're adding two lanes. So that's going to provide additional capacity on Highway 98, which, which should substantially reduce the amount of people seeking alternate routes down Forest Shore, which is what they're seeing now. So I, you know, I, I don't see that, that problem lasting long. Now, obviously, if there's a wreck on 98, everybody's got GPS on their phones and in their cars now, they're all going to be seeking alternate routes. There's not much we can do about that, and, and that is a, that is an opportunity.
That's good. All right.
Anything else from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Chance, could you tell me, is there any plans currently to do a PDNE study or any engineering on sidewalks and stormwater in that Forest Shore Walton Way area?
We, we have seen some, some requests from the public about that. There, there are some major drainage improvements that were done in the Holiday Shores area several years ago. That, that has a potential to restrict the sidewalk opportunities in that area. It would be pretty much a redo of some of the drainage systems to accommodate pedestrian facilities. It could be something very similar to what we're proposing right now in the Driftwood area, and that may be, you know, that, that would be a capital improvement project that the, that the county would, would need to take on.
Would the first step be a PDNE funded by TIF or?
I don't know about a full-blown PDNE, but maybe just, maybe just a little bit of research and data to figure out what the cost implications would be there and bring that to the board for, for consideration.
There was some folks from Driftwood talked to me Thursday about how good, how well they like their sidewalks and stormwater. Could we, like you said, couldn't we do the same thing on those, in those neighborhoods?
Absolutely. The only drawback would be funding. I mean, not, not drawback, that's the only hurdle to jump.
What about right-of-way?
The right-of-way's there, it's, it's about the same right-of-way that we have on Driftwood Point Road. It would just be a modification to the stormwater facilities. I know right now what we're proposing at Driftwood's about a little over 200 bucks a foot to implement, so I, I feel like the costs will be very similar on Forest Shore Road.
And we could do that all the way down to the county line on Walton Way?
Yes, sir. The right-of-way's the same pretty much the entire way.
It'll get a lot of people off the road, too.
Yeah.
People walking, 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 walking their, walking their dogs, you know, pushing their babies down the street, you know, I see that.
Yeah, it's like a skiing, the drive.
You know, right, right now, we've got a, a new pedestrian facility on Holiday Road, south of 98 to Scenic Golf Drive. That should be completed here very soon. We've had a few delays with some utility relocates. I could see next, jumping to the north side of 98 on Holiday Road and then spreading out both ways down Forest Shore.
Okay.
Good deal.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Anything else? Anything from the audience?
Thank you.
Donna? Chance, stay handy.
Okay.
Excuse me, sir, let her speak first, I called her first.
Good morning. Donna Johns, J O H N S. Good morning, Commissioners. I've lived in that area for 18 years, and I appreciate the fact that you're interested in putting in sidewalks and fixing the drainage, because it is a huge issue. But one thing I did want to address, in addition to what Chance was saying, is when that light is in, in place, and then people on Driftwood and Ellis are going to be using it, they will come north through there, they will be, we will be having an increase in traffic. We've already seen what I call those little M and M things, those dune buggies, they come flying through there right now. And once Driftwood and all of that opens up, we're going to have all of that traffic, as well as vehicle traffic. And we do have a lot of, of car traffic that's increased, and it is because probably the ways on people's phones where they change, you know, to get off of Highway 98. I don't know that that's going to stop when the traffic is so bad, and it really is bad. But we also have people that fly through Forest Shore Drive and our other roads along the way. So if there's any way to take into consideration some sort of speed bumps along the way, that would be helpful. Anything to kind of prevent people from wanting to use it as a, as a raceway, which is what they do now. But I do believe that there's going to be quite an increase in the traffic from the south side as well, not just people flying on, on 98. So I'd appreciate anything that you all can do for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, you in the back, you're next, okay? Not you, you come on up. You in the back are next.
This is Joseph Bowers, B O W E R S. I live on Walton Way. I'm a new resident of that area. I, I lived in Oakaloos County prior to that. I just want to say that where I live on Walton Way is not probably directly impacted by the extension of Walton Way out to 98, but I do use Forest Shore every day to go either to one of my two jobs that I have. And I would say, I would urge the county commission that if you are going to, and it sounds like it's going to happen, extend Walton Way, that it's got to be something done on Forest Shore. Absolutely, got to be, because currently, right now, any vehicle that stops and does maintenance at somebody's house along there, they're parking in the street and that kind of thing, and I know you're not supposed to do that. And I would ask that the commission consider that before the road is cut in Walton Way, that those things are put in place rather than cutting Walton Way and then that increased traffic, because with all due respect to the traffic engineer, he can't be everywhere all the time, there is going to be an increase of traffic. I mean, I currently use Legion Park to launch my wave runner, and it's very easy for me to snake my way back up through there from where I live, use Geronimo, use Ponce de Leon, and so that's the way I come home sometimes, to avoid 98. So I live there, and I use those roads like that. So I guarantee you, people are going to use Walton Way to move around traffic even after the six lanes is done. So I just want to urge you guys, it sounds like DOT is going to win, they always win, the federal government and the state always win. So we're going to get the road. I would just ask that you guys consider some improvements to Forest Shore and that area to help alleviate some of that, if you would do so, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Way in the back.
Good morning. James Thurman, T H U R M A N, 324 Walton Way. Just like to reiterate some of the things that the gentleman before me spoke to, and the necessity of getting sidewalks in and some, some safety issues on Forest Shore Drive. We've lived in that layer, that area for a long time, even though our house is not directly impacted, we use Forest Shore, and we have a multitude of friends with small children that live there. Anytime that you would go to Forest Shore Drive during the day and even at night, you'll find children on the road, you'll find people walking their dogs, pushing strollers, and I would, I would say if you pass extending that roadway before you put the safety issues in, it's a death trap for our children. And I will assure you that people, if you look at the eastern, the eastern side of Forest Shore now, that connects there to 98 and comes to Holiday, as soon as we back up, as soon as traffic backs up, cars flow down there, and they're not using the 25 mile an hour speed limit, and it's really a dangerous area. You're just going to extend that dangerous area, and I would ask the Commissioners to please have these safety issues in place before you extend Walton Way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Bagby.
Jim Bagby, B A G B Y. First, thank you for trying to address the stormwater issues in that area and the sidewalk and safety issues in that area. I think that, I agree with everybody else. That should be done first. My questions are real simple. What problem are we trying to solve? The, the Forest Shore folks haven't come before you and said, oh, Uh, first, thank you for trying to address the stormwater issues in that area and the sidewalk and safety issues in that area. I think that, I agree with everybody else. Uh, that should be done first. My questions are real simple. What problem are we trying to solve? The, the Forest Shore folks haven't come before you and said, oh, we need another outlet down to 98. Why do we need to spend, and it's not a foregone conclusion on the light, by the way, because you have to buy the right-of-way, somebody's got to put the road in, okay? That's a lot of county tax dollars for something that nobody's asking for except maybe some developers. There's no need for a light down there. These folks, you know, and just look how many are here from that subdivision or from that area. If you had held this meeting in the south end and addressed this problem like you normally do, I guarantee you, the, the annex would be packed at four o'clock in the afternoon. So just, what, what issues are you trying to solve? Okay? And, and who, who are we trying to help here? Uh, it doesn't make any sense that we're going to put a road that nobody, no citizen, nobody living in that area is asking for. So thi- this is, to me, part of this whole golf garden thing, you're improving the value of that property, and who's going to benefit? So I would just ask you to put in, take care of the stormwater, take care of the safety in the sidewalks, but nobody's asking for this. You don't, you don't see the residents there jumping up asking for it. Thank you.
Chance?
Yes, based on the, uh, engineering study that Atkins performed, uh, a couple of years ago now, really, in several, uh, workshops that we had down in the Miramar Beach area about, uh, Driftwood Road south of 98. As I mentioned earlier, understanding the improvements that, uh, DOT is going to make to 98, we felt that it was a safer intersection for it to be a signalized intersection. Right now, there's a directional median cut there at Driftwood. They're modifying, partially closing the, uh, median cut at Ellis. That's going to shove a lot more people over to Driftwood or a lot more people over to, uh, Holiday Road. At Driftwood, if it remains the way DOT has it, and, uh, people are going to be forced to, uh, take a left turn there headed towards Destin, across three lanes of through traffic, and in one eastbound right. That's a lot to negotiate when people get impatient. So, uh, and, and after requesting that signal from DOT, we've, we've, uh, wrote letters of support to DOT to modify that early on in the plan, and DOT requested that that road be there. And, and then also, anytime that we can make a connection or, uh, close a loop in the transportation network like that, it's a benefit. Um, I, I can't say it any other way.
All right. Thank you, Chance. Anyone else? Come ahead, sir.
My name is Alex Gracia, G.R.A.C.I.A. And, uh, I'm going to pass these afterwards, um, but I took some pictures. I want to leave you with two things, perspective and then some recommendations. I live on Forest Shore Drive, so I get to see and live that traffic every day. Uh, I've been a resident and taxpayer for six years after I retired from the military. And one thing I recommend as someone who's, uh, been in public service, obviously, any decision you make that affects people usually has second and third order effects. So I would ask that you consider some of the things that we're sharing with you before you make this decision. Um, so I got a picture here, and I'll pass these around. This was just yesterday morning. I took some pictures of folks walking by, three joggers, one person on a bike, uh, one walker with a dog. Um, I have kids. If you know, uh, Hagan or Haugen Park is just opposite of Forest Shore, so there are a lot of residents who like to use that park, and one way you get there is by walking on Forest Shore Drive. So that need will always be there. Some other perspectives, um, there are at least eight children, four, ages 14 and under, who live within four houses where I live on Forest Shore Drive. And those are, so there's, that's just one little section of, uh, so we talk about the kids there, it is very real. Uh, other perspective is that, uh, we've had to call multiple times to the, uh, Walton Sheriff County to come out. They've been responsive on occasion, but I know they've got limitations, but that still doesn't deter a lot of the speeders. Uh, we've also had to call a school board. We caught a, a school bus speeding through that area because Forest Shore has certain sections that are quite long, which tempts people to speed through the neighborhood beyond that speed limit of 25 miles an hour. Last year, I had a neighbor, um, who lived right next, and his dog was killed on Forest Shore Drive. His dog was by the mailbox, and the speeder came and killed his dog. Um, and, uh, so there might be some solutions here. I strongly oppose putting in a traffic signal based on what the other residents have mentioned, but I want to bring to you some solutions as well. Um, first one, obviously, we talked about with sidewalks, which would be extremely beneficial. Um, but going from there, um, I've heard that there might be speed bumps, but speed bumps, obviously, there's concern of damage to vehicles. Uh, if you do some research or something called traffic calming, I would encourage you to Google "traffic calming." There are lots of solutions that other counties and cities have put into place. So putting in rubber, uh, speed humps, which are a lot smaller, which controls traffic from five to 15 miles an hour, or even they call them speed, um, speed cushions, that down, brings it down to 25 miles an hour. Those are made out of rubber. So if you go over, it actually limits any kind of damage to any kind of vehicle. And you could design it where you still leave a pathway for someone who likes to jog, like myself, or someone who likes to ride a bicycle, where you could still allow some of that pedestrian fare. Um, there's, uh, one other thing I'm going to leave you with here, uh, just doing a quick market research, there's a company called Radar Sign Data where they put out an actual sign that gives you your speed and, and tells you if you're speeding, but it actually collects that data, and that may be something the county can consider. It's about $3,000 for one sign, and it allows you to collect data on where are the speeders, what are the speeds, and that can actually quantify what the problem actually is before you take action. So, um, I'll leave you that information here as I close. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I approach and bring that?
Hand it to the clerk over there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Mr. Nick, you're next.
Yes, sir. Just giving you all an update. Uh, the other week, I went, took a, took a trip to Dolphin Island to visit the Auburn University Shellfish Laboratory. Uh, took Mr. Caraway back there with us and a few more on the staff, and, uh, just, uh, just trying to educate ourselves about oysters and trying to reintroduce oysters here in the Chautauqua Bay, you know? They start them at spats, they start them in, you know, they start them at, the spat that we saw on these oysters are just phenomenal, you know? Six million of them fit in a five-gallon bucket of water, you know? And they grow them, uh, they put them on sprit, specific locations on oyster bars throughout the, throughout the Mobile Bay. And my idea is to bring it back, bring oysters here to the Chautauqua Bay, because we know the, what, how important oysters are in this bay. Uh, and that was the extent of my trip. And, uh, I'll meet again with PJ. He's the doctor down there at the Auburn University Shellfish Lab, and, uh, we, he's going to come visit us in, uh, either late June or in July sometime. We got to set the date on that and, uh, and talk to us more about the introduction of oysters here in the Chautauqua Bay.
Commissioner, how, how many gallons of, of, uh, water does one oyster purify?
Uh, an adult oyster will purify over 50 gallons of water in a 24-hour period. So, so they're crucial to our environment here in the Chautauqua Bay. Um, I grew up here on the bay, and we don't sit, we don't have that anymore. Our oysters are dying. And, uh, with their research, with Auburn University's research of introducing the oysters here at the bay, we'll have a better understanding of why our oysters are dying and why they're not surviving, so.
Well, as somebody that also grew up on the bay, I can remember when you could eat oysters out of that bay, and we did.
And that's right. And the problem now, the oysters, we can't find them.
Yeah.
You know, they're dying off. And so being the, when we introduce them here in the bay, we'll be able to study those, study those oyster beds and, and get the reason why that they're not surviving. So it's, it's a big research.
Well, I appreciate you taking this project on, and, and please keep the board informed on it.
Thank you, I definitely will, sir. Thank you.
All right. No Alabama oysters?
Now, I tell you what, I talked to everyone down at the, uh, the Shellfish Lab, and they're all, uh, they're all Auburn grads for some reason.
Lord help us. Okay. I don't, I don't have anything, so, uh, we will, uh, we will go right to, uh, citizens' request. Uh, Rover Short? Rover Short, are you here?
Nope.
No? Cliff Nauer? I know you're here, I can see you in the back. You stand up over everybody.
He's actually got dress pants on this morning.
I know, I don't know where, and not flip-flops.
Uh-huh.
Can we embarrass you anymore, Cliff?
It's okay. I probably deserve it.
And a haircut?
Yes, ma'am, and a haircut. Yes, ma'am.
This must be important.
It is.
Want something?
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Cliff Nauer, K.N.A.U.E.R. I'm with, uh, Dewberry Engineers, and, uh, I've got a request before you today to, uh, have the chairman or whoever the appropriate official is sign a setback waiver for the Department of Environmental Protection. Uh, just to give you just a little bit of background, um, there's really only one public marina in La Grange Bayou. Uh, it's at Marina Village subdivision. It is a public marina, it's not a private marina. Um, in, uh, 2008, uh, the subdivision was constructed, and, um, you may or may not know that for many years, the marina pretty much sat vacant, uh, with almost no boats in it for many, many years. And over the last four or five years, the, um, marina's been extremely busy. And so they have a ship store there where they sell, uh, tackle bait, uh, and so forth. Um, they also sell fuel, and, uh, in the last few years, they've gotten very busy, and they have a, uh, currently have a submerged land lease, uh, through the state of Florida, and, uh, they are requesting to expand the size of the submerged sovereign land lease because the size of the boats that they're having come in are bigger and bigger. And so they started off with, you know, 18 to 20-foot boats, and now they've got boats up to 40 feet at the marina. And so, um, so they're doing two things. They're, uh, they're, uh, submitting an application to DEP to expand the size of their, the footprint of their submerged sovereign lands lease, and it doesn't cross the Riparian Line owned by Walton County, but it comes right up to the north right-of-way of the Walton County right-of-way, uh, line. There's a 50-foot right-of-way that basically deadends into the bay. And, uh, I provided, uh, with my, uh, submittal, this, uh, aerial that shows where the county's 50-foot right-of-way is just south of, uh, the existing marina. And so, um, as part of the expansion of the submerged sovereign lands lease, if it extends to within 25 feet of the, uh, county-owned property, they have to get a setback waiver from the adjacent landowner, which in this case is Walton County. And so, uh, brought it to Public Works first. Uh, I met with Chance and the Public Works guys. Uh, they sent me to, uh, Mr. Larry, and Mr. Larry sent me to Mr. Chapman, it's in Mr. Chapman's district, and I sat down and went over it with Mr. Chapman to explain to them exactly what it is that we were trying to do. And, uh, the, the direction from there was to sign up, uh, under citizen requests, to bring it before the board, to explain it, and see if anybody had any questions, uh, about what they're trying to do, um, and try to, um, answer any kind of questions that anybody has. Uh, so, so, Mr. Chairman, that's kind of the background of it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I would also let you guys, uh, know that the applicant, um, is also applying for a development order through the city of Freeport to put in a restaurant down there. Uh, they're also applying to put in, uh, some, uh, boat storage racks. Uh, right now, all the boats are parked on trailers all over the place down there, and they've applied for a, uh, permit, uh, I'm sorry, a development order through the city of Freeport to put in boat storage racks as well.
Cliff, are they going to expand the docking area out into the water?
They are expanding a little bit. They're adding a few pilings, is basically what I would tell you, that, uh, they're, they are adding some pilings to, uh, what's there now, but the biggest issue that they have is that the submerged sovereign's lands, land lease that they have right now is smaller than some of the boats that are coming. And so when DEP met an inspection, probably eight months or a year ago, they made an inspection, they do, uh, an annual inspection, I think, some of the boats that are there now are hanging past the limits of the submerged sovereign's lands lease. And so that triggered the DEP and the owner both to, it, want to expand the footprint of the submerged sovereign lands lease. And so he pays the state a certain amount of money every year, and basically the state was saying, you know, essentially, you're not paying enough because the boats that you've got in here are bigger than what we originally approved, if that makes sense.
No. It's the state.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, um, anyways, they are, uh, proposing improvements. Uh, uh, they've applied for a development order through the city of Freeport. Um, it hasn't been heard by the planning commission or the council yet, uh, to do the other improvements that I described, but this has nothing to do with any of that. Um, this is only for the, uh, submerged sovereign land lease setback waiver, but I wanted to make sure you guys know that they've applied to do some other things down there because it's starting to get really busy.
Just comment, I believe our environmental staff has, uh, looked us over and have no issues with, uh, it moving forward. Is that, Scott shaking his head yes back there, so, uh...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Cliff, we all like the new look. Keep it up.
Thank you, I think.
That Miami style there.
Ann Haig. Ms. Haig, if you will spell your last name for the clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is Ann Haig, H.A.I.G.H., and I despise public speaking, but I do want to give just a brief background because there's so many people that won't let others know that maybe they have the same problem. But anyway, one of the hardest things I've ever had to do is grieve the loss of a person who is still alive. It's been 1,794 days since I've seen my grandson. Well, except right after Hurricane Michael, Grandma had to drive by, and they happened to both be outside working in the yard, cleaning up trees and everything. And occasionally, I get to see a few posts on Facebook from their school. If all else fails, it will be 3,776 days until he becomes of age, and I pray I get to see him and that he wants to see me. I also pray he sees my true colors and not the ones that were painted for him. Grandson, we got it, and your candle still burns. I will now read the resolution. Whereas strong family relationships constitute the foundation of our communities, and we believe that the children and families of Florida deserve this day designated to create awareness and education for this little-known and severe form of child abuse. And whereas alienation behaviors are frequently present in high conflict divorces, separations, asymmetrical custody arrangements, and in intact marriages, often causing mental and emotional anguish to children. And whereas alienation is a term used to describe any number of behaviors and attitudes on the one part of one of both parents designed to interfere, damage, or destroy the relationship between a child and family member. It is a form of abuse that causes emotional trauma to children. And whereas alienation takes advantage of the innocent and impressionable, as well as the suggestibility and dependency of a child depriving children of their right to be lov, to love and be loved by their extended family. And whereas mental health professionals agree that the negative effects of alienation can follow a child into adulthood with tragic consequences. And whereas the recently published diagnostic and statistical manual of mental disorders made several references to the dysfunctional family dynamic of alienation to be a form of psychological child abuse. And whereas Grandparent Alienation Awareness Day is intended to increase the knowledge and understanding of this problem to help families, institutions, the legal and mental health community, and leaders to better identify and combat such abusive behavior toward Florida's most vulnerable populations, the children and elderly. Now therefore, the Walton County Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize June 14, 2019, as Grandparent Alienation Awareness Day in Walton County. I thank you for your time and consideration, and I thank you for the past years putting up with me and allowing me to do this, and I appreciate you all.
Some more tuition? Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you, Ms. Haig.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none?
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department, C.A.R.P.E.N.T.E.R. Uh, our only item this morning is, uh, your consideration of a resolution, uh, accepting the FDOT grant for service development transit from Dufuniac Springs to Santa Rosa Beach's courthouse, um, and request the chairman sign the grant agreement with FDOT. Uh, this provides us with... This provides us with funds to purchase four cutaway buses that will house about 28 people each. Three of those buses will be running full-time. One would be a spare in the event that maintenance is needed or one of those buses goes down. This is a three-year, 100% grant. The funding for the operation portion and our requirement to start service would begin within 90 days of receiving the four buses. We expect it'll take about 90 days to acquire the buses from state contract. On, at the June 10 meeting, we expect to bring you a request for proposal for an operator to actually operate this service on behalf of the county.
That's running from the courthouse to the annex, Mac?
Yes, sir.
What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Is that all you've got, Mac?
Thank you, sir. That's all we have this morning.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.